Erin Benham, the Chair of the Legislation Policy Development Committee, calling our committee this morning to order. Our first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from December 2nd. May I have a motion?
So moved. This is Bonnie Burr.
Second.
Any changes at all? Any discussion about anything on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Our first item is our update on Goal One from Charlene, John, and Glenn, who are all on with us this morning. I'll pass it over to you, Charlene.
Thank you so much, Erin, and good morning, Board members. It's always great to see you. And we're excited today to be able to update you on all the accomplishments that we've attained and where we still have challenges, what we need to do on addressing the State Board Plan Goal One, to which for newer members, I am the goal leader. And that is addressing the non-academic needs of students. You see the slide here. It is your plan. But we're really thrilled that the strategies that you will hear from us are what the board highlighted and elevated as really critical and important for us to address. So I'm going to stop there because I want to make sure we have enough time. And John and Glenn will go forward and do our updates, and then we will answer questions. So I will turn this over to them, and so they can take it from here.
Thank you, Charlene. Hello, Board members. I'm sorry that I don't know you all well. Given COVID situation, we are not in person. So I've known the last group of Board members much better than all of you. So sorry about that. There are really, unlike the other goals, we have multiple strategies under Goal One. Strategy One is about improving alternative education settings. Goal Two, we called next-generation student supports, and it really focuses on reducing chronic absenteeism and exclusionary discipline. And Strategy Three focuses on community, family and community engagement. Next slide, please, John. And it takes a few seconds to move the slide, so actually, it's here now. I just want to give you some information, background information about alternative programs. Last year, in 2019, 2020, there were 2,191 students enrolled in 83 alternative programs in the state. And for the last several years, we've been working on alternative programs. In 2016, the CSDE issued guidelines for alternative settings. And during the following legislative session, the General Assembly passed laws expanding and more clearly defining the obligations of school districts to provide alternative settings and educational opportunities for students who have been expelled. The CSDE had worked with the Alternative Schools Committee, which was a broad-based group of stakeholders, to develop the guidelines. And we then used the same group, the Alternative Schools Committee, to develop the standards for educational settings. And those were passed in 2018. And also in 2018, we wrote best practices for alternative education settings. So that's kind of the top two slides. One of the major things we've been doing with the alternative community is having professional learning community meetings. Prior to this, there was really little connection between alternative educators throughout the state. And each year, we're having five community practice meetings. The goal is really to share best practices, share issues, get people talking to each other to improve the overall conditions at the alternative programs. During the first two years of the community practice meetings, a lot focused on the guidelines and the best practices. But we also partnered with Attendance Works, who Kari may speak about, or John may speak about later when talking about attendance, to really help the attendance at the alternative settings. That's as, I want to say this the right way. The chronic absenteeism at alternative settings is considerably higher than statewide. We knew this was an issue of approximately 60% of students in the alternative settings are chronically absent each year. So one of the things that we did last year, along with Attendance Works, following the day-long attendance symposium meeting, we had a meeting at the end of the day with all the alternative education folks from the four big cities, as well as a couple of charter schools. And we realized that the typical strategies that are used to improve attendance in a typical school weren't working in the alternative settings. So with Charlene's guidance, we developed what's called the Alternative School Attendance Pilot Project. We started this last, this was, that meeting was last year in November, sorry, November 2019. And we basically spent time listing all of the barriers that students face getting to school. Students in alternative settings haven't thrived in the typical high school. And so they're in alternative settings really as a way to keep them in education. But the barriers included high rates of homelessness, much higher rates of special education, mental health issues, transportation issues, having to work to support families, having to take care of younger siblings so parents could work. So there are just a lot of issues going on. And this Attendance School Pilot Project is, we are working with SERC, and we've kind of contracted with them, along with Dr. Jocelyn Mackey, who actually works for John, to look at all of these barriers on an individual and small-group basis at the schools, in the alternative schools, in the four cities, the four biggest cities, as well as these charter schools, to really address the problems head-on in a social work type of way. For example, if students are homeless, we'll work with Louis Talarida in our department, who's our homeless expert, and the local homeless agencies to really help the family get into a secure housing situation. The same is true with mental health issues. If students are facing traumatic issues, mental health issues, depression, we'll work directly with the local community mental health and behavioral health providers to meet the needs of these students, to help them be better engaged in school, to attend school more regularly, and then to hopefully graduate on time. Last year, Dr. Mackey and I had started visiting the alternative programs. We actually visited eight in the first part of the year through like January, February. And then, of course, the pandemic hit, causing all this programming and visitation to really stop. We've since revived the Attendance Pilot Program. We're starting to work with districts. We've had initial meetings in November, December. And we're ready to kind of go forward and make this really happen. John, could you go to the next slide? And it just shows, this simply shows the level of chronic absence in alternative settings. You can see it's, for the last four years, it's ranged between 60 and just under 64%. One of the things, though, about alternative schools that I'd like you to understand is chronic absence means missing more than 10% of days. 10% of days, 18 days in a 180-day school year. Some of these students are missing 50 or 100 days of school a year. And so even if they greatly improve their attendance and go from missing 100 to then missing 50, even to missing 20 days, they're still considered chronically absent. So one of the things we're also doing is to try to use other measures of attendance and really look at students on an individual basis to try to make improvement where we can. Right. I'm all set to pass it to you, John.
All right. Thank you, Glenn. I'm going to speak about three of the other areas that we focus on for the Board State Plan. And then attendance and engagement, school discipline, and family engagement. Just so I don't forget, I want to acknowledge that there are three people on this call who are largely or completely, in some cases, responsible for the work in these areas. Kari Sullivan is our attendance and chronic absenteeism guru in the department. Judy Carson is our family engagement expert. And Kim Tverso, among a number of other things, does, works with schools on school discipline. So I probably will mention them as we go on, but I certainly did not want to forget. So with attendance and engagement, we need a number of activities and a number of initiatives going on. I think the theme you'll see in all of this is cross-divisional teamwork within the department, engagement of stakeholders and families, working with community partners, and listening and engaging with districts. I mean, all of that rolls in to all of the work that we're doing. And so that certainly, we begin with the cross-divisional team that includes our partners in special education and the Turnaround Office and the State Education Resource Council to do some of that work as well. We've developed an advisory team that includes key stakeholders from districts to help inform our processes and help identify and alleviate barriers and look at strategies for success. Talk Tuesdays is the brainchild of Kari Sullivan. This started when COVID hit and schools closed. Kari started, what started as a weekly Tuesday morning conversation with school district liaisons working in the area of attendance and chronic absenteeism. It still continues. It's now bi-weekly. It's a one-hour, one-hour-and-a-half meeting. And we, Kari gets upwards of 60 to 80 liaisons from districts engaged in that conversation, which is really fascinating. We're able to use that platform to focus on specific populations. We had a conversation about best practices and strategies around assisting students who are experiencing homelessness and unstable housing, making sure they're engaged. We talked about virtual mentoring. And there's just a lot of wonderful conversation going on about success. Starting this month, we are, our inaugural meeting of the Community of Practice, which is monthly opportunities for district attendance leads in certain districts to get together and have conversations, and again, share ideas around successes. That will begin on the 20th of this month. There are a myriad of professional supports that are happening all the time. I'm really excited to say, and proud to say that really under Charlene's leadership, we, in all of these areas, have done dozens of webinars on all kinds of things. So on attendance for students experiencing homelessness, working with the Governor's Prevention Partnership on virtual mentoring and how to provide districts with information on how to shift their sort of in-person mentoring to a virtual mentoring. We've had conversations with students to get their voices, and teachers, and families, and all kinds of things. So those continue in earnest. We continue, I'm sure most of you or all of you are on those emails that go out to superintendents to notify on the webinars that are occurring. And then the attendance. Then the slide advanced. There we go.
There it is.
There it is. Okay. All right. So this is our, this is certainly not the beginning of the work on chronic absenteeism focus. You know, that's, we, again, under Charlene's leadership, have been doing that for a decade or so. And this is where, but this is where we began with the Board State Plan. You notice a couple of blips. You notice in 2017, we had a spike. There was a very interesting piece of legislation that passed just before that that actually identified in-school suspension. Kids who are in in-school suspension for more than half a day were categorized as absent. And that was one year, and then it was, you know, was corrected in the following year. So that was a 2017 blip. Last school year, this data reflects the in-person school attendance through the middle of March, when the governor canceled classes. And so there are a number of things. Obviously, there was the fear of COVID ramping up from January, you know, beginning in early winter to mid-March that impacted that. There was a particularly challenging flu season. And then, you know, we typically see some opportunities in April and May for those who are having poor attendance to sort of recover some of that time. So we didn't get that, obviously, as schools closed and remote learning started on March 15th. And that's why we see that data difference in 2019. Shifting to school discipline, one of the major items that we have embarked on is the Connecticut School Discipline Collaborative, which is amazing, array of stakeholders in school discipline and schoolwork. I know many of you have participated in that or attended some of those. I know Erin has. And so we've got, it's just an exciting array. We've got attorneys who work in school law in that room. We've got a number of advocates. We've got legislators from various districts. We've got teachers. We've got families. We've got parent engagement experts and parent advocates. We have superintendents, and we have principals and a number of folks. It's just a very rich discussion on all things, all things school discipline. And it continues virtually in the era of COVID. One of the products, or a couple of the products of the School Discipline Collaborative are family guides on suspension and expulsion. So with them, we basically put together, they started off as a one-pager, ended up being multiple pages, both in English and Spanish, that describe the school responsibilities with regard to school discipline in suspension and expulsion, but also express to families what their rights are and what their responsibilities are under the law with regard to those processes. There is a lot of work, of course, happening on monitoring data and managing data. I think next month, I believe, will be the, in February, will be the discipline presentation that Charlene will do. And all of this certain, all this data and reporting is in partnership with our Performance Office in large part. Again, a number of webinars and policy initiatives and things happening during COVID, engaging families, I'm sorry, engaging school districts with regard to school discipline and provision of professional learning. I will also just add that, I'm going to show the next slide, which is total disciplinary sanctions from pre-K to 2. As you know, the law changed in 2015 and 2016. And so we've seen a steady decline in those. And Kim Tverso works in a number of these areas. So we identify, Kim identifies outliers, districts that have high numbers of pre-K to grade 2 suspensions, and works directly with them, really calls them out and works with them on developing corrective action plans to get those numbers down. Kim also works under the IDEAA Indicator 4, which is disproportionality in suspensions and expulsions and disproportionality in students, identification of students in special education. So I don't want to take up too much time. So I'm going to move on to family engagement. And Judy Carson is our lead with regards to that. And so together with the Office of Early Childhood and the Early Childhood Education Cabinet, and a number of stakeholders develop Connecticut's definition and framework for high-impact family engagement. I'm sure you've seen that before. It's been out for a long time. Through that, we continue to provide strategy memos for superintendents and working on family engagement. And really, family engagement is, particularly in the era of COVID, has sort of found itself in every aspect of what we do, which of course is what family engagement is. It's not one person's responsibility. It needs to be rolled into everyone's work. And we established the Commissioner's Roundtable for Family and Community Engagement, another wonderful stakeholder-driven collaborative that advocates families, family liaison, school personnel get together and speak very candidly about what the issues are with schools and engaging families, and have direct conversation with the commissioner to talk about all of those, all of those issues and remedies. The Friday Cafe Peer-to-Peer Learning Network is the brainchild of Judy Carson. She started that a number of years ago. It's a monthly opportunity for family liaisons, folks who work with families, to get together and talk about best practices. There are guest speakers from all over the place. Superintendents and principals and experts in family engagement come and speak to that group as well. During COVID, she's actually added a Thursday night, a similar opportunity on Thursday nights for teachers to join because we know teachers can't engage during the day. And so I believe that's called Thursday After Hours. And so again, doing what we can to meet the needs of all of the stakeholders in our, in the work that we're doing. And then finally, we, there's a grant called the Parent Trust Fund for Parent Leadership Training. We're working in collaboration with the Office of Early Childhood on empowering and providing training for parents on parent leadership. And I'll pause there. I'll turn that over to Charlene.
Thank you, John. And what I would like to see, and so you've gotten a really high-level look at the work being done, but they truly are very integrated and connective, and it is part of the system. So for example, as we look at attendance, there is a parent engagement component when you look at attendance and what we need to do. When you look at discipline, there is that. So these are interwoven pieces and not just separate and distinct pieces of work to be done. And what you don't see that John didn't represent is kind of the latest work with our interactive map that we've developed, that I know you've seen through G, that you can go on and you can see information on a monthly basis of how kids are doing in terms of attendance. And so we're doing that. I had the opportunity to share that in a national forum of funders. And there are other states who want to be Connecticut, right? Just because of how we're working together to make sure we're making information transparent, publicly available, because it is taking all of us to be working together, including our community members, to address this issue. So you've heard the high level, but we're talking about our staff that John mentioned, looking at data, you know, going to New Haven or calling folks, seeing what's happening there, what's going on with the kids that's not showing up? What are we doing in real time, providing that assistance? And it is the academic piece, and it is the behavioral piece that we're connecting. So I really just want to thank them. In about a week or so, there will be a national publication about chronic absence across the country. And a preview, actually, today, we're looking at the blurb that they're writing about Connecticut being one, continue to be one of the leaders in what we've done, this work over the years. It doesn't make it that we're perfect. We still have a lot to do. And people know we're not satisfied that we have kids, you know, that are challenged and are not able to access their education on a daily basis. But we are pleased with the work that we're doing and the progress that we're making, and are committed to making sure that we continue to get great results. So I'll pause there so we can answer your questions.
Thanks, Charlene. Before I take some questions, just a few comments. I too would like to thank the staff. I'm thrilled to see this update. Even more thrilled to see Talk Tuesdays is so well-participated. I remember when that first came out, what a great participation rate. I think you said 60 districts, 50 to 60 districts, or liaisons from districts? So that is great to see. The family engagement part, I was able to go on some of those Thursday talks and so forth. And I know how much those are appreciated by teachers as well because we have so many teachers that need the assistance too that are at home and becoming teachers of their own children. And so those have become very, very important for them, as well as educators. And Kim, I'm thrilled that you're still on those districts. And I'm hoping we see a decrease in that, what we saw hype up there with our pre-K too. And then I know that the agency was very good about going after those districts and questioning what was going on there after that law was changed. So I thank you, Charlene, and your staff, and John, Glenn, and, you know, your entire staff, because this is just such great work, a terrific update. I will turn it over to any questions from the committee.
Erin, I had one was, what percentage of the high, of the school districts have alternative schools?
You're muted, Glenn.
Sorry, I was muted. There are approximately 80 in the state. Many don't have them. 32 of the 80 are, have over 20 students. So many of them are small programs, kind of within the high school. For example, Farmington High School has an alternative program, and the leader attends our community practice meetings. They have 10, you know, around 10 students. So that's pretty common. So 80 out of a total of, you know, 203 districts, although there are many charters in that group. Maybe 30. Thank you.
Like, I know they're, not all districts have it, but if a district were not to have it, do we have any that take students from other districts?
Yeah, there are. One, yes, yes, there are. There are some regional ones. For example, some of the RECs are running alternative programs. There's one in Willimantic that Eastcon runs. Krec is running one. And although the one for Krec is mainly from their students from magnet schools, but come from a variety of districts. And some of the, some of the ones in cities are larger, meaning, you know, they're 100 or 120 students, for example. They will take students from other nearby smaller towns.
I know when they first started, yawns ago, it was common that they shared because not many districts had them, but they did take.
And now with the changing legis, the changed legislation regarding educational opportunities for students who have been expelled, districts are required to provide some type of alternative setting. And so that has actually encouraged, you know, more regional programming.
I imagine they struggle with this attendance. I mean, that program itself, so many students land there because of their attendance, and then, you know, throw a pandemic on it.
Exactly. And these students really do have, I was trying to stress that, many, many barriers to, you know, barriers that you and I didn't face when we were going to school.
Right. I remember sitting in that meeting, I think it was at Cromwell, wasn't it, Charlene? That we took place in, and just listening to the stories. It was heartbreaking what some of these kids go to. You know, you've got to give them kudos that they're showing up for 50 days sometimes. That's all they can give us.
Absolutely. And these are some of the kids with the greatest needs. And it's really, I'm proud to be doing what I can to help.
And that is why, that is why we wanted to do, because when we look nationally and talk to experts, they're saying, we're not quite sure what the strategies are for this population of our students. And so we decided to take on our own very intensive effort and support, which is a pilot that Glenn is working on. So we can really get closer, so we can find out what exactly that we needed to do. I think we're going to learn from that. But we recognize that it has to be more hands-on and more focused and more individualized support, right? So if these students are experiencing homelessness, how do we connect them to service? If it's mental health, how do we connect them to service? If it's other things, what do we do? And so that's the intensive effort that we're now providing in the pilot that Ben is supporting.
Yeah, they certainly recognize. I think I've mentioned before, my whole child study group through NASPID that I'm on, very, it now starts with our, let's hear from what's Connecticut doing with this? Because a lot of their resources that come up on the screen in my group are Connecticut. I see Charlene a lot. Your quotes come up a lot in our study group, which is fantastic to see. And we've been doing the work a lot longer than just last year.
Madam Chair. Glenn, I do have a couple of questions and one statement. You referenced the Krec Alternative School. And that's not just, in my mind, it's not just a, taken from the magnet schools. It's taken directly from the districts. So the 26 districts that Krec serves can feed into that alternative school, I believe. And I may not be absolutely correct there, but it is the 26 districts that Krec serves. But my questions are, I've got a couple. One, you referenced four large cities that was focused on. And in other circles that I am associated with, we always reference the big five. So which district was not included? Or what are the?
Well, where the alternative schools are in, Bridgeport, Harp, and... Well, where the alternative schools are in, Bridgeport, Hartford, New Haven, and Waterbury. So which is the fifth?
See, Stanford is the fifth city that's always included as part of the big five. Stanford doesn't have an alternative program?
They may, but part of this started because of the work of what are called the RED committees. And as far as I know, there isn't one in Stanford. The RED is Racial Equity Disparities. Is that correct, Charlene?
Yes, it is.
And they don't have, and it has to do with the Juvenile Justice and Policy Oversight Committee work. And basically, we were asked to work with those, the four cities and not include, well, we weren't asked to work with Stanford. Previously, I know Stanford had an alternative charter school, which is no longer in operations. You'd know, actually at the board level, probably know more about that than I. But we're also working with, we were going to be working with that charter school, but they're no longer in existence. But we're also working with the Explorations Charter in Winstead or Winchester, largely because they have a population of students that are similar to the alternative students. And of course, as a charter, they're a regional place as well.
And, you know, back in the day, I did run an alternative school in Bloomfield for about, for two years. So I'm very familiar with it. But that kind of leads me to my real question. You said the 80 districts. Do we have any sort of racial breakdown within those districts?
Yeah, sure. Total, I can, so as of last year, 2019, 20, just over 21% of the students in alternative settings were Black or African-American. Nearly 40% are Hispanic and 34% were white. And of course, you know, that's a disproportionately high percentage of students of color.
Yep, very, okay, thank you.
You bet.
Anything else from the committee?
Sure, Glenn, this is Bonnie. I guess one of my questions is when you survey and take a look at where the racial disparity is really largest, is there a way to dial in on working with those particular, those particular alternative schools? You know, you talked about RED and why you only look at four of those versus the rest. So I guess my question is, is there a reason why we wouldn't try to get at the similarities to the RED schools and work with them in a more comprehensive manner? Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, well, part of it is capacity. The schools in these four cities are, you know, about 400 students or so, which is like a fifth of the total statewide population of alternative schools. And the idea is if we really drill down and work with the students and the, you know, the leadership in these schools, we'll learn lessons that we can then expand out to everyone else. And so we are aware that, you know, students who are in alternative programs and other places may have kind of similar issues. But the idea is that those in the bigger cities may have more, you know, of these types of issues. So that, you know, given that there's me, one part-time staffer and some, and now contracting with CERC, folks to work on this. You know, the hope is to do a pilot, do it well, learn some answers, and then expand.
Okay, thank you.
And Bonnie, I appreciate the question as well because the community of practice that Glenn talked about, so it's not waiting for a year and let's see what we get from the pilot. But the community of practice with all of them allow us to be sharing what we're learning at the same time with them as well. So they're not out of it. It's just that right now they're not a part of the intensive pilot in those communities.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else from committee? Okay, thank you again. Great update, thank you.
Thank you all.
And Jessa, I'm going to pass it off to you. You're up for our next item, our discussion regarding the racial justice and equity statement.
Sure. To start with, you know, I'm sort of a stand-in here. Unfortunately, Dr. Wood was not available, who had worked on this position statement update. And so I did want to let the committee know that this version of the position statement was developed in conjunction with Dr. Wood, also Dr. Ingrid Kennedy, Kennedy of the, of CERC, the executive director. And then Malia Seavey and also Dr. Karen Dubois-Walton were engaged in, you know, moving towards this update from the last version that we saw. So I think the intent is primarily to have a conversation about it. And I, you know, I want to also acknowledge that I think the first time that we brought up moving in the direction of having a position statement or updating our position statement was related to national events. And I'm sure we would all acknowledge that it's apropos that we're here today after the national events in the past week, discussing the importance of culturally responsive education. So I think I'm going to leave it at that since, again, I think this is more of a discussion topic. And I would certainly be happy to have Dr. Dubois-Walton or Malia Seavey, who engaged in developing this draft, provide some insight on the direction they took.
Okay. Jessa, did you want the board to discuss, I mean, the committee to discuss matters today? And do we need to vote on this item to send to the board?
That's a great question. You know, I think it depends on how robust the discussion is. If there's additional movement or redrafting that we would need to do, then obviously we could vote on it at a future date. But if we feel as though that this, you know, this is ready to bring to the full board, we certainly could take a vote on it to move it forward.
Okay, then I'll open it up to the committee about your thoughts and discussion. Erin?
Good morning. Sorry, I'm having tech issues. I keep getting booted out. I appreciated being able to have some input into the statement though. And I think the team did a great job when Malia and I were able to meet and discuss it. They did incorporate some of the, all of the additions that we had, we had talked about. So I'm pleased with the product that's here in front of you at this point. I think what we were wanting to call out very clearly is the department's commitment to anti-bias and racially conscious education. And then make it really clear, you know, what we're calling on from policymakers at the school level, at the teacher level, at the family and community level, what higher education needs to be doing in order to prepare educators for anti-bias and racially conscious education. And then, you know, set up student expectations. So it's broken down in that way. And I'm not sure if you want to go through it in some more detail or just open it up for questions. Maybe Malia wants to add also.
Malia?
My apologies, I was having technical difficulties and all of that. So I don't know where Karen had started. So I don't have anything to add. I heard, I think, the most of what Karen had noted. The, you know, I just, I look forward to actually moving this forward after this discussion, trying to figure out what are those next steps? Because I think that the more the time that goes by, the more disservice we sort of do to ourselves and the respect that this is due.
That was my thoughts too, Malia. I know you got knocked off. I think we're all trying, I keep getting warnings too that my internet is coming. So if I disappear, you'll know why. There must be something on with this one. But that was my question at the beginning, Malia, whether or not we are going to discuss this. If the committee felt that there should be changes to it, if not, we will move the document to the full board, which at time, I would imagine Adrian would be very much involved, Jessa, in presenting that to the full board. Am I correct?
Yes, I would request Dr. Wood and probably also Dr. Kennedy from CERC come to provide some additional insight and be prepared to respond to any questions on that.
Okay. Anything else that the committee feels that, you know, as you read it over, that you would like to add? Change, tweak, or is, are you ready to vote it to move it to the full board?
Yeah, I just think it's really well done. Very comprehensive, very straightforward. I guess, I think one of the things that may come up at the board, you may want to be ready to talk about that. It's like, what do you do now? And what are the, you know, at least the beginning ideas of the next steps as you bring it? I don't know if it needs to come through here or not, but just, it's a great statement. But, you know, then what do you do?
I agree. I think that's, I think that's going to be the important thing and that's what's going to be asked, certainly when the public, when it goes out to the public, that what do we plan to do about it?
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead, Jessa, you go.
All right, Karen, I think she's letting you go.
Okay. No, I would just call our attention to the section that is specifically the responsibilities for the State Department of Education and use that as a jumping off point for guiding next steps out of the department. And, you know, one of the things I like about it is that it is broken down and so that there are specifics, you know, for each of those identified audiences that I think can provide some framework to, so now what? So yeah, I would agree with moving it forward.
Okay. I like that idea too, Karen, that we use ourselves as the role model to this is what we're doing and then, and move it forward from there.
Yeah. And I think, as I think the last board meeting, I think it was the last one, approving the curriculum and then, you know, bringing this forward in a future meeting. I think those are some really important steps that this board has taken to be responsive to the needs of our diverse student population.
Right, yeah. I think that the timing is crucial. So if there is no objection, Malia, did you have a?
I certainly don't have an objection, but I just had a comment. I just wanted to also, I think, fold into the opportunity right now, right? We are, we are going through our own leadership transition and at a really crucial point in time. And I think that the next leader to come into this position, being able to use this as well as sort of the, you know, affirming a sort of foundation of moving the, continuing to move the department forward in a commitment to addressing the racial equity issues in the state of Connecticut.
Yeah, that was, I was thinking as well. And if we do move this forward out of committee, it will be able to go on to our board meeting for February, which would be, you know, we'd certainly be before picking any kind of permanent commissioner at that point. So that, it would be a good tool, I think, that we can refer to, just as we did. For some of you, remember, we would refer to our five-year plan as we were looking for the present commissioner. A lot of what we were looking for off of that. And so I think we incorporate this piece as well as an important piece moving forward.
I want to just, if I could build off of that, Erin. Yeah, there have been some other states as well, and Oregon just comes to mind for me that several years ago had made a statement, a very strong equity statement from their, from their Board of Education, saying, voicing their commitment to addressing this. And it ended up becoming not just a, not just a statement and direction forward for education, but that other agencies within the state also look to, to move forward. So I'll dream big and hope that this can at least set a tone for other agencies within the state as well to be able to build off of.
Okay. Could I have a motion to bring this to the full board?
I'll make the motion to move the item forward.
I'll click it in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Jessa, if we could have it on for February's board meeting, that'd be fantastic. And thank you, Karen, for your work on this as well. Thanks so much.
And I was just going to say time check, it's 9:16. So I will defer to you, Chair Benham, as to whether you would like to move forward with the bylaws or if you think it would be appropriate to push it to the next agenda.
Week, I do have a few questions. When I looked over our notes of when we discussed this in committee, which I realized I had to dig back like how long ago it was that we discussed in committee. And then there were some discussions on the retreat. So maybe we should push it. I would just ask Bob, because my first question was to you, did we encompass the VOTAC schools all correctly in the document? Because I know that was a big piece of, the clerical piece that was incorrect in the bylaws. Are those all correct now?
Yeah, they're all correct. There was one, I sent a note to Jessa, just on the first page, they use the old terminology for, uses the old terminology for the system. I just need to see text. And thank you very much for including it in the other place.
Some of mine are like that also, Jessa. So I can send you mine. Any other board members quickly have anything that they saw that they didn't think is what we had discussed? Or, and of course, there is a piece in there that I never even noticed the first time that this comes up. Like we're obligated to look at this prior to the first meeting in June or something on an odd year. And guess what? We're in an odd year. So we'll be definitely looking at it again to do that. So why don't we table it? I will send you some of my thoughts that I thought maybe were missing from the conversation and we'll just put it on as our first item to quickly go through. Well, not quickly go through, but to go through on our next, our next meeting, if that's okay with everybody. Okay? And that gives us.
That sounds good, thank you. So we'll post that out for next time.
To get a breath, walk around a little bit and log on to the other, your second one. Remember, we have three today, three logins.
I will see you soon. Thank you all for your participation in the committee today.
Thank you, guys. See you soon.